Meeting for City Council, Monday, April 11, 2022. Pursuant to Government Code Section 54953E. Members of the Daily City Council and staff will participate in this meeting via teleconference. Members, members of the public are encouraged to watch the media, the meeting via live stream on Daily City's YouTube channel at HTTPS colon backslash backslash WWW dot YouTube dot com slash Daily City Video Meetings. And the city's agenda. Website at HTTPS colon backslash backslash WWW dot DailyCity.org slash agendas. Or on local channel 27 on Comcast. Okay, so with that, let's go ahead to the next item, Pledge to the Flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
And to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right. The Miss City Clerk, if you can, please conduct roll call, please.
Mr. Buendetura.
Present.
Ms. Di Giovanni.
Present.
Ms. Manalo.
Present.
Mr. Sylvester.
Glenn Sylvester, present.
Dr. Rod.
Present. Thank you, Ms. City Clerk. We have a couple of presentations today, so we have one presentation proclaiming April 2022. Or April 2022 as Fair Housing Month. Daniel Williams, Fair Housing Staff Attorney from Project Sentinel. So the proclamation comes as follows. Whereas adequate housing is a basic need and right of all people. And whereas this year, we celebrate the 54th anniversary of the enactment of the Federal Fair Housing Act of 1968. Which states that discrimination on sale and rental of housing is illegal when based on race, color, religion, sex, or national origin. And whereas the Fair Housing amendments of 1988 extends fair housing rights based on familial status to families with children and based on handicap to disabled persons. And whereas California statutes additionally protect citizens based on age, marital status, sexual orientation, gender identity, and source of income. And whereas California celebrates the 62nd anniversary of the Fair Employment and Housing Act. And whereas the City of Daly City supports fair housing efforts to eliminate discrimination in housing and recognize the benefits of Project Sentinel to educate home seekers, apartment managers, and apartment owners on federal and state housing laws and to investigate complaints of illegal housing discrimination in Daly City. And whereas to heighten public awareness, the City of Daly City wishes to focus public attention on April as far as Fair Housing Month. Okay, so now therefore, I, Roderick Doss Magwal, Mayor, and members of the City Council hereby proclaim the month of April 2022 as Fair Housing Month in the City of Daly City and encourage all residents and community members to celebrate the value of harmonious and diverse communities of neighbors and to support the goal of equal housing opportunity for all people. So with that, I believe, Daniel Williams, would you like to? I'll hand it over to you for a couple of words.
Yes, thank you so much. I just want to say very briefly that Project Sentinel greatly appreciates Daly City's continued support and your help to spread the word about fair housing rights as well as the fair housing services that Project Sentinel is able to provide to all the residents of Daly City. So thank you so much.
I'll take some comments from my colleagues, Councilmember Pamela Di Giovanni.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to say directly to you, Mr. William, and to your staff that you guys indeed have helped many, many residents and many families that have been referred over there, who have been under, was under so much stress and that the way you handled them and treated them with much respect. I heard a lot of feedback from them and just so you know that it's all positive. Not, I mean, not that I didn't think it would be, but it's always nice to hear how they're treated, especially when they're under those kind of conditions and with the different issues that they face. So I appreciate that. Please pass that one to your staff and to Project Sentinel with much appreciation, with the compassion that you show. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. That's great to hear and I'll definitely pass that along to the rest of our staff.
Yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Justin Manalo. Oh, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and thank you so much for your work at Project Sentinel. I think that as it's so important to continue to support individuals and families in regards to housing. And this proclamation itself in regards to fair housing. I think, you know, even with Daly City's history in the past with, you know, redlining and just are just having the unfortunate situation of not being, having equitable opportunity to purchase homes that today in this era, the work even more so to fight for that equitable accessibility is so important. So thank you, Mr. William, for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Justin Manalo. Vice Mayor Ray Buventura.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. William, I wanted to ask you a question that was raised by a constituent in Daly City in getting rent relief and the COVID situation. First of all, can you just elaborate if that relief is still available? And secondly, do you actually have to be delinquent in your rent for any sort of relief to apply? Or can you apply in anticipation of a delinquency?
So Project Sentinel is actually segmented into two different departments. I represent our Fair Housing Department, but we also have a Tenant Landlord Department, which would specialize in issues such as rent relief and, you know, other issues related to your question. So I would encourage you to reach out to our office. You can also send me an email personally and I could direct that along to our Tenant Landlord Department as well to have that question answered for you, but that wouldn't be my area.
Okay, understood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Are there any other comments, questions from any of our colleagues? I definitely want to send out my appreciations to Project Sentinel as well. And just reinforcing and supporting just a Councilmember Justin Manalo and her comments about, you know, you know, providing, COVID is not over yet and there's like the impact of COVID on people having the access to job security, which really that's which relates to having stability in terms of housing is key. And I think the more resources that we have that we can provide, that that's just, that's a plus in terms of trying to provide as much resources for those that are having a hard time right now, because I know there's still a lot of folks that are still having a hard time and and I just want to say thank you to Project Sentinel for being one of our beacons in the community.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your support.
For sure. Thank you, Daniel. All right. Next up for presentation is proclaiming April 10, 2022 as John Madden Day. All right, so John Madden Day, whereas John Madden was born April 10, 1936 in Austin, Minnesota, to Earl Russell Matt Madden and Mary Madden, his father, an auto mechanic, moved the Madden family of Daly City, California in 1939 when John was three years old. And whereas John Madden grew up in the top of the hill, Daly City, California, where he played with his friends in the vacant lot next to his house nicknamed Madden's Lot, or played handball at the nearby Woodrow Wilson Elementary School or baseball and football at Marchbank Park. And whereas John Madden attended the Catholic school, Our Lady of Perpetual Help, graduating in 1950 and then attending Jefferson High School, graduating in 1954. And whereas while playing football at Jefferson High School, John Madden became a rising football star and went on to play one season at College of San Mateo in 1954 before he was given a scholarship to the University of Oregon. Then attended Gray's Harbor College, playing in the fall of 1956 before transferring to Cal Poly in San Luis, in San Luis Obispo, where he played both offense and defense in 1957. And whereas John Madden was drafted in the 21st round, 244th overall pick by the NFL's Philadelphia Eagles in 1958, but suffered a knee injury in his first training camp, ending his playing career without having had an opportunity to play professionally. And whereas John Madden moved his focus to coaching at Hennig Junior College in Santa Maria and then at San Diego State before he was hired as an assistant coach by the Oakland Raiders in 1967. Two years later, he was named head coach of the Oakland Raiders in 1969. And whereas from 1979 through 2008, Madden worked as a color commentator analyst on NFL games for all major American television networks, which included ABC, CBS, NBC, and Fox, where his announcing style was punctuated with his interjections such as boom, wah, bang, and doink. And his lively and flamboyant delivery won him critical acclaim and 14 Sports Emmy Awards for Outstanding Sports Event Analyst. And whereas in 2002, Jefferson High School alumnus John Madden donated the lighting for the campus football field and they are named Madden Lights in his honor. Whereas Madden died of undisclosed causes at his home in Pleasanton, California on December 28, 2021 at the age of 85. And in a press release announcing Madden's death, NFL Commissioner Roger Goodell said that Madden's was football, adding there will be another, there will never be another John Madden and we will never be indebted to him for all he did to make football and NFL what it is today. Now therefore, therefore, I, Roderick Doss Magwal, Mayor, and the members of the Daly City Council hereby proclaim April 10, 2022 as John Madden Day in the City of Daly City and encourage the Daly City community to celebrate and remember John Madden and his dedication to his community and his legendary impact to the game of football. Let me see here. I guess I'll just go ahead and open it up to my colleagues, if you have any, or if there's anybody here accepting this proclamation. Okay, I'll go ahead and provide the comment, or I'll open it up to my colleagues with Vice Mayor Ray Buventura.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to first thank you for putting this forward together. I didn't know really a lot of that stuff in the recognition of John Madden, and I think he is well deserving. I know, Mr. Mayor, that you are a Raider fan at heart, so I can understand. But I really, I appreciate you bringing this forward. I think John Madden is just a well beloved man in our community and what he's done for football and he's brought it back and put the lights at Jefferson. And so thank you for recognizing him. I think it's well deserved.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Pamela Di Giovanni.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to refer to you and say, I liked the expressive boom and everything that you read. It was great because he would be so proud of you for saying that. A true fan, a really true fan. You could tell that with your compassion. So we know he's watching, so appreciate that. Yes, indeed, he's never forgot where he came from. When we did the media, for Kingston Media with Kevin Mullen and his partners and when we did a story about Daly City, there's a great interview in there with him and he never forgets where he comes from. And we do hope that we know the high school district is going to have something coming up too. And maybe in the future, we can figure out something for him as well. But to have this today is really poignant and much appreciated. I'm sure his family will appreciate it as well. And like at some point, we can invite them here, maybe at the same time when they come from the other high school district. So, Mr. Madden, you really made a big impact with your big heart to many, many young people too, like in the football arena, because he taught them to be great football players and a great team. But you know from sports, Mr. Mayor, and those that play sports, Mr. Piccolotti, that it takes more than that, that it makes you a whole person and then how you grow up and how you are and how you are a real team player. And that is really the essence of it. So bravo and, and I thank you very much. And to the Madden family, what a blessing he was to Daly City and to all, especially with his broadcasting skills and everything else he gave with heart. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Pamela Di Giovanni. Councilmember Justin Manalo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First and foremost, thank you for pursuing this and ensuring that this proclamation happens. I know that you had brought it up on the dais and ensured it was on the agenda. You know, hearing, you know, just the amazing life story of John Madden from being from top of the hill, going to Marchbanks Park. I mean, as a local person who grew up in Daly City, it hits a chord to know that someone with such greatness as, you know, comes from the city of Daly City. You know, going to OLPH, I mean, literally the stomping grounds that, you know, we all kind of travel to or the schools we've gone to. And so just to the family of the Madden family, such rich legacy. And I will, I'll never forget when also the football field lights came up. Because that's en route to my mom's house and it just, it's just, it's bright. And to have those night games at Jefferson, you know, and not, not having to go to another, another high school, I think, you know, that that was really special. And so thank you again, Mayor, for putting this on and sincere condolences to the family.
Thank you, Councilmember Justin Manalo. When I was thinking about doing this proclamation, I was just thinking about like who are the symbols, who are some of the heroes that come out of Daly City? And when I first moved to Daly City about 20 years ago and it was one of the first times I got to watch the documentary about Daly City. And when he came up, a lot of my classmates were like, yo, you need to find this documentary about Daly City and John Madden's on it. And he was from the top of the hill. And for all the football games I watched on TV, I look forward to all of his commentary. He had a fear of flying, so he rode the bus everywhere. And if anybody ever gets a chance to see one of the new Madden documentaries that's on NFL Network, they show it time and time again, but he said that he learned a lot about people by just taking the bus everywhere and seeing the common folks driving throughout the Midwest through city to city and learning the basic, the, I guess, the common denominator of humanity, just learning from other people. And you could tell by the way he commented and how he did color commentary, because words that he would use struck a chord with a lot of folks to be engaged when he spoke. And, and it's no secret, I'm a very huge Raiders fan, so Raiders, Raider Nation. And, you know, I grew up watching the Raiders when I was a kid in Southern California, moved up here, continue to watch the Raider games despite them losing so many games. We stay loyal and I think that's one thing. I don't abandon ship, you know, we stick with those that you're loyal to. And I think that's what Madden represented for football, what he represented for the Raiders. And I also want to thank the Madden family for, you know, learning from that documentary on NFL Network and the type of sacrifices that they had to do for Madden to be the larger than life character. So this goes out to John Madden, the Madden family, the Madden legacy. I still, to this day, still play his video game. So I just want to thank John Madden for all the work that he's done for football, for people and for society and thank the Madden family. So thank you again for staff for putting this together. I really appreciate it. Okay, moving along, for the approval of minutes of regular meeting, March 28, 2002. Are there any edits or modifications? If not, can I get a motion to, for the approval of minutes?
Motion to approve?
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilmember Justin Manalo and a second by Vice Mayor Buventura. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, motion is approved. Moving on to the next thing, approval of agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda?
And first by just, and a second by Vice Mayor Buventura. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Moving on to the consent agenda. Are there any? Yes, go ahead, Councilmember Pamela Di Giovanni, go for it.
Yeah, I'd just like to pull item number four, please. That's it. Thank you.
Number four. Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, are there any other agenda items? Okay, seeing none. Well, can I get a motion to approve all the items under the consent agenda except for item number four?
Uh, sorry, Mr. Mayor, I'd also like to pull item number six.
Okay, so we have, sorry about that. So number four and number six. We have a motion to pull items number four, number six, and to approve the following agenda items. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
So have a motion by Councilmember Pamela Di Giovanni and a second by Councilmember Justin Manalo. All right, so let's go ahead and.
Mr. Mayor, can we get a voice vote on those consent agenda items?
Okay, oh my. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. All right, so agenda, agenda item number four. And this will go to. We'll tackle this.
So if you'd like, I can do a just brief introduction.
Okay, go ahead.
So Tim Nevin is not here this evening, but I'm representing the Finance Department. We did help facilitate this agenda item. And basically, just as a quick overview, this is a report that we put together for the Daly City Housing Successor Agency, which is a report we need to file annually. And it basically reports out on the activities of the Housing Successor Agency, which is from the former redevelopment agency to demonstrate how we're using our 20% housing set aside. We're doing this report for fiscal year 2013 through 14 to 202021 to catch up on the activity from the past few years and to show how we've been using our funding. As summarized in the report, we're totaling that we received about $7 million in revenue in housing funding and that we spent money on both administrative costs and homeless prevention expenditures of about 1.1 million. Also noted in this report, and this is kind of a finance thing, but we have not been accounting for the housing set aside as specifically as we'd want in a separate fund, so we'll be fixing that this year. And when we come back for next year's report, we anticipate we'll have the housing set aside more separated from the rest of the housing asset money, which is in Fund 12. So again, kind of a cleanup activity that we'll do, but just wanted to make sure that was clear in terms of this year's SB 341 report on the Housing Successor Agency. And with that, I think I'm here and then I know there's folks from ECD here to answer any questions that you might have.
Councilmember Pamela Di Giovanni.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hi, thank you, Ms. Vessar and Tom, Mr. Nevin, and thank Ms. Mothershead for the report. I just have a quick question and thank you for doing that for the public as well, because I don't know if they know much about our housing agency. Is that you said that on the homeless, we spent, I think, 1. something million? And what did that exactly go to as far as, I know it's homeless, but is in our Daly City resident, but where did that exactly go to, to, for use?
Betsy or Tatum want to answer that question?
The total amount spent for homeless prevention was $179,393. That was through a contract with Daly City Partnership to provide emergency rental assistance, primarily administered prior to the pandemic.
Oh, got it. So, Ms. Sobel, that means like maybe vouchers or something of that nature to give them a roof over their head?
Rental assistance paid directly to landlords for tenants who were in arrears on their rent.
Okay, so not the homeless that are already on the streets?
No, it was homeless prevention.
Okay, homeless prevention. Okay, thank you very much. That's all my clarification. Thank you, Ms. Sobel, Ms. Mothershead, and Ms. Vessar, and thank you, Mayor.
Are there any other comments, questions from my colleagues? All right, seeing none, can I get a motion to, or do I, it's a, it's a, oh yeah. Can I get a motion to?
Motion to approve, Mayor.
Okay, a motion by Councilmember Justin Manalo.
Second.
And a second by Vice Mayor Ray Buventura. All those in favor, say aye.
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 So motion is approved. Skipping down to item number six. Accepting and appropriating funding from the County of San Mateo for summer enrichment programs.
Thank you, Mayor Dos Akbal and City Council. It is recommended City Council accept and appropriate funding in the amount of $20,000 from the County of San Mateo to use towards scholarships and added enrichment for our summer programs and camps. San Mateo County approved funds to create the Summer 2022 Enrichment Program. Enrichment programs focus on developing the academic, social, emotional, and physical needs and interests of students through hands-on engaging learning experiences. Such programs introduce students to learning opportunities and materials, encouraging them to develop new interests and build new skills. The scholarship program is meant to expand access to summer enrichment programs for low-income and vulnerable students, support the social, emotional well-being of students to mitigate the setbacks and hardships associated with COVID-19, and provide opportunities for students to re-inspire and propel learning to counterbalance learning loss attributed to the COVID-19 pandemic and distance learning. The contracted deliverables providing up to $20,000 include enhancing and expanding programming through contracted instructors for music and science and to cover the enrollment costs for socio-economically disadvantaged students and other vulnerable students, students with special needs in foster care, English language learners experiencing homelessness. The city will receive $20,000 grant funding to support scholarships and added enrichment to summer programs. Both myself, Gina McInnany, who put the grant together, and Jennifer Dur are here if you have any questions.
Thank you, Denise. I see one of my colleagues with a hands up, Councilmember Justin Manalo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Brown, for that explanation. I think, you know, I'm in full support of this item. I wanted to pull it because I wanted to say that that's wonderful to see staff look, look for grants that are, that we can, you know, attain, especially around youth development. There has been so much that has transpired over the course. There has been so much that has transpired over the course of the pandemic, pre-pandemic, but any dollars that we can support to youth and young people, I know that you all try to do an exceptional job in reaching no, very young people, but also to ensure that the most vulnerable in our community gets access to these types of programs and support. So I'm all for it. I just wanted to say, great job, I think. Any way we can find more resources. You know, twenty thousand dollars is not, it's not small, it's not large, but I think that every single time we try our best to get more resources to our programs and the communities, especially the young people, is so important, and we know that that's our future and our leaders today. So thank you very much. Wonderful job.
Thank you.
Councilmember Pamela DiGiovanni.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say also thank you, because I know when people go for grants, it's very competitive. So that's doing an outstanding job when you have to be competitive in such an environment as this COVID, knowing that the foster children and the, there are a lot of homeless children, as you all know, in our community, as well as, and I go, I know that they know you by your face and who you are, because they, you guys treat them with just as much respect as anyone else and much love, and embrace them, and it's a beautiful thing, because that, all what you do really makes a difference in a child's life, and the ones that are physically challenged, emotionally challenged. It's outstanding. You guys don't just do your job. You do it, it's clear, within the passion and the love that's felt. And I don't feel like I'm tearing up already, but when you run into these children, they're pretty emotional about it, because they're already struggling. And saying to them, hey, you know, you can come, and they can be equal, this is an equal playing field for you. You know, they're not treated less than when they show up. No one even knows if they got the scholarship. That's what we achieve. That's equity, and that's what we can strive to do and keep doing this in Daily City. And it's a beautiful thing. So thank you very much. Appreciate it, and to all your staff. It's, it's very meaningful. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Then thank you to Gina McInnany for reaching out and putting it through in the county.
Yes.
So thank you all.
Are there any other comments, questions from my colleagues? I just want to say I appreciate all you all in terms of finding more funding. This type of funding and opportunity to provide for students, especially like what through the staff report talking about after the COVID nineteen and being in isolation, we need to find ways where we can safely bring back all of our youth into these programs, so they can get reacquainted socially, right? And as an educator, social interactions play such a huge role in terms of one's learning. So thank you to everyone. Alright, so seeing, not seeing any, or I don't think I see anybody else. Okay, let's go ahead, and you have a motion to accept an appropriating funding from the County of San Mateo?
Motion to accept.
Second?
You have a first and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Congratulations, y'all. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Denise. Thank you, Gina. Alright, so moving along. We have item number ten. Zone change, ZC zero dash zero one dash twenty-two dash one five four seven seven. Amendment to the Title Seventeen zoning locational standards for smoke shops and tobacco stores. And we have Michael Van Lookhausen with a presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Let me bring up the presentation. Yeah, so this is a request by the City of Daily City to amend the zoning ordinance, which would establish locational standards for smoke shops and tobacco stores. The Planning Commission reviewed this proposal back in March and has forwarded this to the City Council for adoption. So the regulation of smoke shops and tobacco stores has been found to be within the interest of the public health, safety, and welfare. There's a substantial likelihood of the continued establishment and operation of smoke shops and tobacco stores in Daily City, and for this reason, the City Council had expressed some interest in regulating these types of uses. The expansion of smoke shops and tobacco stores in the city could result in undesirable impacts to the community. And among these impacts are increased potential for tobacco sales to minor, great, greater opportunity for the sale of illegal drug paraphernalia that is marketed as tobacco paraphernalia, and heightened risk of negative aesthetic impacts, including light, the loss of property values, residential neighborhoods, and businesses near such uses. One of the first things that we needed to do when establishing the regulations is to find a smoke shop and or tobacco store. Won't read this to you, it's in your staff report, but essentially, it's an establishment dedicated to display, sale, and distribution, furnishing of tobacco, tobacco products, or tobacco paraphernalia. So there's a clarification about grocery stores, supermarkets that have these as ancillary uses, and those are not considered smoke shops or tobacco stores. So we've proposed amending the zoning text to add definitions for the following things, smoke shop and tobacco store, ancillary sale, what tobacco is, tobacco paraphernalia, tobacco product and e-cigarette, and we're proposing to amend the following chapters to adopt specific requirements that allow smoke shops and tobacco stores without the requirement for a use permit. However, we are recommending the adoption of locational standards. And the zones that would be affected are the CO zone, the Bart Office Commercial Zone, the C one Light Commercial Zone, which is what, the C one is where a lot of the existing stores are on Mission Street, and that's where they are concentrated presently. C two Heavy Commercial in and within the Sullivan Corridor, Pacific Plan Districts, including the one thing that's not listed here is the CS district. So one of the things that we proposed is that there would be locational standards for smoke shops and tobacco stores, and which would require that a minimum thousand-foot distance between smoke shops and tobacco stores and existing such business, and existing businesses, existing businesses that are smoke shops would be provided. So the existing smoke shops in Daily City are listed on the screen. I won't go through every one of these, but they do concentrate around Mission Street largely. There's one at Washington Street. And we're probably familiar with some of these near the top of the hill. So we have proposed a thousand-foot separation between the smoke shops and tobacco stores, and this is a map that shows what that thousand-foot radius would look like. And essentially, adoption of a thousand-foot buffer would very much constrain the ability for future smoke shops and tobacco stores in Daily City, at least on Mission Street. There would be the ability to have them, say, at Skyline Plaza, Ceremony Shopping Center, some of the other shopping centers in the ceremony area, and Geneva Avenue. But Mission Street would be pretty much done for, in terms of having any more of these types of stores. Proposals exempt from CEQA, and again, the Planning Commission did recommend the City Council adopt the findings, find the proposed regulations exempt from CEQA and approving the zone change, amending the zoning ordinance to incorporate the locational standards, the one thousand-foot buffer, and allowing such stores by right without a use permit. If there's any questions, we're of course here to answer them.
Thank you, Michael. I see a lot of hands coming up, so Councilmember Justin Manalo.
Am I unmuted now?
You are.
Okay, great, because that popped up. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and also thank you, Mr. Van Lookhausen on that presentation. You know, first of all, I want to commend staff for listening to the direction of having this ordinance be on the table. Really, the essence of this was, you know, when I started looking around on the streets of Daily City, most especially around Mission Street, there was definitely a lot more smoke shops popping up here and there. And given the location all along Mission Street, I think that, you know, we know the health implications of what tobacco has done. We've seen over the rise of, you know, the target towards young people with vaping. And so, you know, to me, this, this is important as far as two things. It's, number one, it's the health of our residents, the health of our youth. Number two, it's also, is, is this something that we want Daily City to be known for? And I don't want Daily City to be known for smoke shops up and down the streets of Mission Street. Like, so I thank the staff for putting this on, for putting it through the Planning Commission. I think that having, you know, a process now, so that we can ensure that, you know, well, for me, I don't, I don't believe that we need any more, given what we've seen through studies and health studies in regards to the impact of tobacco. And so to me, it's, it's, it's a no-brainer to push this ordinance, and it's also important to signal to our community and young people that, you know, we support their health and well-being. So thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Justin Manalo, Councilmember Glenn Sylvester.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Lookhausen, I have a couple of questions for you, if I may. I see a big concentration on Mission Street. So my first question is, what happens to the existing businesses who basically are non-compliant if we were to approve this one thousand-foot separation boundary map?
They wouldn't be allowed to continue operating.
Okay, so they would be grand, go ahead.
They are grandfathered. However, tobacco business license that are related to the sale of tobacco products, I understand, are not transferable. So this, a similar question came up during the Planning Commission and meeting, and the Planning Commission had requested that such stores not be able to transfer their licenses. As it turns out, there's already a provision in the the city's, the city code that prohibits the transfer of such licenses. So these stores can stay, and in fact, yeah, so these stores can stay, short answer.
Alright, thank you so much. My second question is, do we have an overlay on the cannabis buffer zones? What is the cannabis buffer zones?
Maybe could bring those up, what we've adopted, but we don't have those overlaid on this.
Okay, because if I'm not mistaken, there's going to be one on JS. I'm wondering if there's any that's going to be on Mission Street. And the third portion of my question is, what is the buffer zones for cannabis locations? If I'm not mistaken, it's six hundred feet?
The, I believe the City Council decided that there would be no cannabis retail sales on Mission Street. We can bring those maps up if you'd like. It'll take me just a moment.
Yeah, when we created the cannabis overlay zones, we sort of factored in the six hundred-foot buffer, but we created zones that you could locate anywhere within that particular zone, and there are no zones located on Mission Street.
Okay, well, I'm having a problem if applying a one thousand-foot buffer zone for tobacco vaping and et cetera, when I think it should be equally applied to cannabis. So take, for example, on JS, how far is a cannabis location close to a vaping or tobacco shop?
There would be some overlap on Unipr Serenade, this part of Daily City near City Hall, there would be.
Okay, well, I'm having a problem with that, and that I do believe in the ordinance, but I think it ought to apply both to both cannabis and tobacco and vaping, and it should be a thousand-foot separation. Just my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Glenn Sylvester, Councilmember Pamela DiGiovanni.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Michael, thank you for the presentation. Do, I think you mentioned quickly CS, what is that?
It's Service Commercial.
And what is that?
There are very few service commercial zones. There's a few properties.
Okay.
By and large, this regulation mostly impacts properties inside the C one zoning district.
Okay, and then why isn't it like applicable to the Geneva area over by the, the by the Bay Shore? How do we keep them from, how many are over there by the Bay Shore?
There are none.
They have zero, right?
They have zero, so somebody could set up theoretically one or two.
Even if we did this ordinance?
Even if we did this ordinance. Probably just one, knowing the properties that are there, probably just one.
Okay, because I was gonna say, is there any way to prevent, in a land use situation, to prevent this, like epidemic-type thing is happening here? And then I have to agree with Councilmember Sylvester, why isn't it under, even though it's marijuana, it's still smoking, right? Even though it says smoking tobacco, but marijuana is smoking, and even though I know that some are for medical purposes, I get that, but the smoke itself, even the UC Berkeley just came out with that study and saying the secondhand smoke from, from the marijuana can be damaging more than the tobacco, and it was done by UC Berkeley, I think he was a grad student, and the paper was accepted. So I'm just concerned about, like everybody says about the health or what, or have you, and a crossover from the marijuana stores that were approved, those zones, as Councilmember Sylvester alluded to, how close are they to the, these tonight, these smoke shops? You know, the ones that, five, that the, I think it's six zones, and then one in each, and five have already been approved? And how does that thousand feet applicable to these smoke shops versus the marijuana shops? I think we have to, if we really, really care about the COVID, the mental health, the well-being of our youth and our adults and families, that we really need to sit back, and I know that, you know, my colleagues at the time when they approved it, but here we are post-COVID, we're not over COVID, by the way. And now we have the marijuana stores. I see on the map, they could cross over with the smoke shops. And smoke marijuana, smoke tobacco, you know, and people still have access, as I see, like you said, grandfathered, and they still have access if they want it, you know, want to make sure that, you know, people have rights. But at the same time, we're trying to promote, as they alluded to, the health and well-being. So I don't know if we can do, on the Councilmember Sylvester has any suggestions on a friendly amendment to, or what have you, but I have to agree that, you know, that has to be applicable to when we say one blanket thing about health and well-being. We really need to think about all of it, because currently, one of those is going to be on Junipercera, and Val has been turned into a marijuana retail, and that's right by our Daily City Youth Health Center. Exactly, and by the mental health, by our Daily City Health Center. So anyway, so that's what I have on the table, and I agree with Councilmember Sylvester on that aspect. So, anyway, so that's what I have on the table, and I agree with Councilmember Sylvester on that aspect. So, thank you very much. I'd like to see that added. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
As a point of clarification, the only real overlap in terms of existing smoke shops and potential cannabis is this number two. Do you have a cannabis retail zone in the Sullivan Corridor area around City Hall? But I believe the city council made the decision not to allow any cannabis east of 280 on Mission Street. And so, there shouldn't be any overlap from any of these stores.
So, but do we have a possibility of new stores trying to come in?
Oh, yes, there could be new stores that come in, that's true.
Yeah, so that's.
And Skyline Plaza is possibly another one.
So, they could do, because Skyline Plaza already has marijuana approvals, and then a smoke shop could also come?
Yes. Well, we've only allowed them, well, that's Skyline Plaza's zone, I think, C1 or C2. So, that's probably an example of one where we could see that, yes.
Okay, so then, we would have both?
We could have, we could have both at Sky and Plaza. I believe that's a cannabis retail, there's one allowed there.
And then, somebody can go in and do a smoke shop?
They could.
So, I think that that needs to be thought out and excluded. But thank you, and I'd like to hear from my colleagues on that particular note of it. But thank you, Michael, for pointing that out, that there could actually be two. Like, Skyline Plaza, marijuana retail, and a smoke shop, potentially. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
And here, Councilmember Pamela DiGiovanni, Councilmember Justin Manalo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for that clarification to staff in regards to the location or potential locations. You know, I think this is something separate from the cannabis. I think we have had discussions on cannabis locations in the past. And today, we're talking about the tobacco smoke shops. And indicated, if you can see very clearly, that there is multiple smoke shops on the Mission Corridor. I mean, if you just look at the map right in front of us. And so, I think in order to ensure that there isn't any more smoke shops that arise within, you know, these areas, I think that I feel comfortable in two aspects. Making a motion to approve the ordinance as it is, including the Bay Shore area and Skyline Plaza.
I second that motion.
Thank you, Councilmember Justin Manalo. We have first and a second, but I know there's additional comments, Councilmember Pamela DiGiovanni.
Yeah, thank you, and we haven't even had public comment yet, so, yeah, thank you. So, thank you for adding what I, what I brought out, and thanks, Michael, for pointing out it could happen in Skyline. So, and I thank my colleagues for making that, including that in the amendment, because that's something we need to think through when we're doing this at the same time. And if there are any other ones that are currently approved, and the five retail marijuana retails that were approved by council, my colleagues, are there any crossovers that could happen, just like the one in the Skyline Plaza? That would be an amendment, as long as we're making the amendment now. Can they have a smoke shop and a marijuana retail, Michael? In any of those areas?
It's just the areas that I've mentioned that I can tell. Yeah, because I don't think that in the Bay Shore, we allowed cannabis either. I think everything needs to be admitted.
We have the King, King.
King Plaza.
King Plaza, and, not King Plaza, but the one at King and Skyline and Skyline Heights, or City Lights.
City Lights.
City Lights, so would that be the same thing? And then, as the, as the skyline, to where they could bring in a smoke shop and have a marijuana retail in the same area?
Yes.
So, I'd like to ask Councilmember Manalo to also, in the amendment, would she include that as well? To make sure we don't have that issue also at the, is it called King, it's not King Plaza, it's called?
So, Councilmember DiGiovanni, I mentioned it earlier that this, I believe this ordinance, it's about tobacco. And so, I, it's about tobacco this evening, and if you have something in regards to the cannabis ordinance, I think that's a separate issue.
No, it was, is to say that there's smoke shop, just like you amended the one that I suggested at the Skyline Plaza, because if you do it at the King Drive area, then smoke shop and a marijuana shop can be side, almost side by side. That can be allowed. That's, that's my point. Just like the same thing as the skyline that was put into the amendment, the friendly amendment. Thank you, I'll take those off the table until after the public comment.
Vice Mayor Rayventura.
Unless I heard it wrong, I don't recall Councilmember Manalo making amendment to anything about Skyline. I thought she said the Bay Shore. And so, my second of her motion was what she said in her motion and nothing more.
Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Manalo, did you mention anything about the Skyline Plaza in your amendment?
My amendment did include Skyline Plaza, it already included that and the Bay Shore.
Right.
And so, I mean, I don't, I'm not understanding what your question is at this juncture, when there's a motion at the table.
Well, I understand that, but there is a point of discussion. And then, also, the clarification when Councilmember Manalo was not aware of the skyline part of it as well. So, we all need to be clear of this as council members when you make a decision. So, thank you for clarifying for that, also for our vice mayor. Thank you, I believe Councilmember Sylvester is next, thank you very much.
Okay, Councilmember Glenn Sylvester.
I haven't yet had public comment.
Thank you, Mayor. The issue at hand tonight, and I believe a case has been made. In a sense, we are trying to limit any additional smoke shops along the Mission Corridor and JS, and I see item number one over near South Mayfair. However, to go out and say we should not allow any in the Bay Shore is not subject to the information that has been provided to us, it's not, as of right now. To include information pertaining to Skyline Plaza, it is not available on this matter as well. I think in the past, we have put the cart before the horse, and we should have taken into consideration cannabis and the overlay for present cannabis, future cannabis. I believe that this matter needs to be studied more before we make a decision to inhibit or prevent, say, for instance, a smoke shop in the Bay Shore. We are stymying business. And what we're looking at right now is the Mission Corridor, and we're trying to address the issue that's happening in Mission. And as per Mr. Lughouzen, these folks would be grandfathered in. But we're asking to add additional areas, which I believe is not pertinent to what we are discussing this evening. So, once again, I feel uncomfortable in approving this with all the amendments that will potentially be made, as per the motion on the floor, unless we consider other locations or potential locations to include, but not limited to cannabis locations. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Glenn Sylvester, Vice Mayor Rayventura.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I actually want to commend Councilmember Manalo for considering the Bay Shore area, which I think is a responsibility that we have always had with respect to protecting the Bay Shore area. And so, I have no problems seconding her motion. And I think it's actually a good thing. And I'm not really sure what the argument is to not do it, other than to want to have business of a smoke shop at the Bay Shore area, which I think is absurd to even suggest that we should be fair and open up and let them see if they want a tobacco shop or a smoke shop there. So, with that, I'm absolutely in support of the motion on the table. I confirm my second of it, and I think we should just vote.
Before we move on, let's take them for additional comments.
Okay, so I just wanted to confirm that the idea here would be to not allow smoke shops on Geneva, is that, is that the motion, or is that the direction the council wants to go? And I'll just state why I'm asking that. The proposal is to create the distance standards between smoke shops. And so, if there is no smoke shop on Geneva, but it's a zone that allows it, we would have to create a prohibition of smoke shops, not a locational standard, because there's none there, there's no concentration there. So, we would have to change the proposal to not be a separation, but some sort of prohibition of sorts.
Right. Was that Justland's original motion to do that? I suppose it was.
It was my original motion to include the Bay Shore, and then, I think it was Skyline. In that respect, if it's a prohibition that will change the ordinance, what does that look like? Is it, is it just stated necessarily, like at this juncture? Or is that something separate within the different planning areas? You know what I'm saying, like, is the prohibition, will the prohibition be something that states it for the Mission area, the Bay Shore area? So, trying to understand what that entails.
Yeah, it would be a little bit tricky, because in this case, we're looking at commercial zones. And so, Geneva has a C1 zone, which is the same as Mission Street and many other corridors. So, we would, and we don't have specific neighborhood zoning. So, we would have to create a geographic area, we'd almost have to create a reverse overlay district, sort of like the cannabis one, only saying where it's not allowed. And that would be a little bit different. Because, yeah, because the zoning for Geneva is the same as Mission Street, it's the same. And, you know, King Drive, it's the same as Skyline Plaza, all of those have C1 zoning. And so, if we made it C1 zoning, then it would be prohibited everywhere.
So, part of the concept is that we try and regulate parcels in a zoning district uniformly. And that's why we've come up with a 1,000-foot buffer, so that everybody's treated the same. Now, if we're going to parse out a part of the city where we don't want to do that, it becomes more tricky, because then a property owner on Mission Street, who owns a property that's on C1, has a different regulation than somebody on Geneva Avenue. I don't know that it's impossible. But it gets a little tricky that way. We do try and treat all parcels the same, with the exception of creating distance standards. One of the things that we can do to solve the interface, if you will, with cannabis retails is to create 1,000-foot buffer, we can build into this ordinance 1,000-foot buffer from any existing cannabis retailer.
That, sorry to interrupt, but that would only create a prohibition 1,000 feet from cannabis zones, and there are no, again, if we're looking at the Bay Shore, there is no cannabis zone.
No, that will not help, that will not address the issue.
Still would not help.
That's true.
So, I think we'd need to think about, I don't know.
Okay, is it possible that today we approve what's recommended, and then, for the future, be able to create an ordinance in the other areas in regards to prohibition? Is that possible? Like, for now, I think the intent is to ensure that there aren't any more smoke shops that pop up within the, where the map, if you pull up the map, how saturated it is.
Well, the council can always initiate rezones. We could adopt it tonight. In the interim, while we look at doing something else that would prohibit smoke shops, if we were to get a business license, we would have to use the law that's on the books. So, if, in the interim, while we're working on, you know, some sort of prohibition for the Bay Shore, and an application comes in, we, you know, we'd have, we'd be compelled to approve that. So, we could do that, just putting it out there that if anything comes in the interim, then.
So, okay, I thank you so much for that clarification. Given it's my motion and for clarity purposes and for the public that is watching, you know, I intended to have Skyline and also the Bay Shore included in this as far as ensuring that there aren't any kind of more tobacco smoke shops within those areas. But I think we need to have further study in those arenas. But I will move forward with the locations listed by staff for the ordinance this evening, and would further study for the other, for the other areas down the line. So, I do want staff to, you know, further study the other arenas in regards to prohibition. It's separate from what we have on the table right now. But what's at hand is, let's take care of ensuring that there doesn't continue to be even more saturated arena all along Mission Street. So, I, that's what I have on the table. So, Mr. Mayor, I will revert in adding the two areas. But that is my motion, with the indication that staff should research and study next steps to prohibition. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Justland Manalo, that'll be noted. Let's do this, let's take two more comments, then we'll open up the public hearing. So, Councilmember, oh, go ahead, Vice Mayor Rayventura.
I just wanted to clarify then, if, so the Councilmember Manalo made the motion, which essentially, if I understand it, was to, her motion was to accept what staff had recommended with the locations as is. So, I just want to clarify that I'm supportive of that, and I will second that motion again, as is, as Councilmember Manalo made it, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, Councilmember Pamela DiGiovanni.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I appreciate you doing, allowing point of discussion. And just for the record, not that it matters, but it was I who brought up the Bay Shore and Geneva and the Skyline Plaza, along with Councilmember Sylvester for that issue. But do appreciate that it's a part of it. But I think that it should be overlooked, it should be looked into a little bit more in-depth and a little thought through when you're going to bring something forward. You really need to, like, not the, the. a little thought through when you're going to bring something forward. You really need to like, um, not the, not the, the, um, the staff. But anyway, with that, I just wanted to make sure that was for the record, along with Councilmember Sylvester, uh, and his suggestions as well. So, thank you. And we, I guess we have public comment. Thank you very much.
Um, before we go to public comment, I just want to make my, a couple of comments here. Just to, um, reiterate that when we sell anything that regards cannabis or tobacco sales, there is no smoking on site. So I just want to make some clarifications. Because I think in prior discussions, there was like, there's going to be more smoking. People are going to be smoking on, you know, this assumption about smoking on site, which is illegal. I know people can purchase, but I don't think they can smoke on site. So ju- that's a clarification. And then also just to make a, um, a point about, you know, because this discussion is about breaking up this, uh, concentration of tobacco, um, um, stores in the top-of-the-hill Mission area, that, um, when we talk about business licenses for smoke shops and tobacco stores shall be non-transferable. So that's also, um, just to have a quick question to Michael. So let's say one of these stores closes. Uh, the new tenant has to come in, and then they have to reapply all, oh, they can't even go, be- they can't even, um, apply in that same area, because, um, we're, if we vote this through, then there's a thousand-feet buffer, correct?
It's my understanding that a, a, a transfer from one party to another would trigger the city's ability to consider the thousand-foot buffer.
Okay, great. Thank you, Michael. Thank you, Tatum. So with that, can I get a motion to open up the public hearing?
So moved.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second? Okay, so first by Glenn, Councilmember Glenn Sylvester, and second by Vice Mayor Ray Ventura. Um, are there anybody here for public comment on this issue?
For those members of the public who wish to comment on item number 10, please click the raise hand feature to speak on that agenda item. For those joining by phone, press star nine to raise your hand. When you hear your name called, you will receive a request to unmute your microphone, and you may begin speaking. Each person will receive a maximum of two minutes to speak. When your two minutes have been reached, please wrap up your comments. Speakers on in compliance will be muted. Any use of profanity will result in the speaker being muted immediately. Looks like we have one hand raised.
If we're ready for a public comment, so call in user two.
Press star six to unmute, please.
Hello, how are you? Hey, so I saw this on the agenda. I was going to comment on another one. But, um, this is actually rather interesting, because I've actually seen this other, other locations. But, um, we're targeting just tobacco and smoke shops and, uh, marijuana shops and all that good stuff. Um, what about alcohol? I mean, if we're going to hit, uh, tobacco, if we're going to hit the alcohol or the, uh, the marijuana, wouldn't it be also fair to hit the, uh, alcohol too? So I know there's stores like, uh, I think, uh, Target sells alcohol, but they don't sell tobacco, and Walgreens sells alcohol, but they don't sell tobacco. But there's a, there's actually a smoke shop in Westlake, and there's smoke shop, I think one family owns like three or four smoke shops. But, um, you know, that's something to consider. Obviously, this ordinance or this amendment, that the title is actually focused on smoke shops and tobacco, but I think it should be considered for fairness, because I think alcohol kills perhaps just as many as, um, tobacco. So just food for thought. Um, but yeah, that's something to consider in the future. Thanks for your time. Bye.
Thank you for your comments. That concludes public comment.
Thank you, Leilani. Um, motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close.
And a motion by Councilmember Glenn Sylvester. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
And a second by Councilmember Pamela Di Giovanni. Um, can we get a motion for City Attorney to read by title only?
Motion for City Attorney, second.
All right, so we have a motion by Vice Mayor Ray Ventura and a second by Councilmember Justin Manalo. Um, Ms. Zimmerman, if you'd like to.
Well, thank you, um, Mr. Mayor. I'm just assuming if, if we do have a voice vote for me to read by title only.
Oh, all of those in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Daly City, amending Title 17 of the Daly City Municipal Code regarding locational standards for smoke shops and tobacco stores. And we will entertain a council member to introduce the ordinance.
Happy to introduce, if I may, Mr. Mayor.
Madam City Attorney, uh, for the record, I want to make sure that, uh, I'm not approving this particular ordinance. So, uh, if this matter is read and introduced, uh, I, I think it needs to be noticed. And, uh, we haven't done so.
And so do I. Thank you.
So we have, uh, three ayes, myself, Vice Mayor Ray Ventura, and Councilmember Justin Manalo. Um, and we have two nays, Councilmember Glenn Sylvester and Councilmember Pamela Di Giovanni.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome. And I believe Councilmember Justin Manalo has introduced the ordinance. Am I correct?
Correct.
Okay, just making sure. All right, so, um, thank you, everybody, for item number 10. Um, going to, item number 11, second reading ordinance number 1456, amending section 2.58.060 of the municipal code, Small Business Commission Meetings. And it's off to you, Rose.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the City Council. This item came before you as an introduction at the last regularly scheduled meeting. This is an ordinance of the City of Daly City, amending section 2.58060 of Title II of the Daly City Code regarding Small Business Commission Meetings. We would need, just need a motion and a roll call to adopt the ordinance, Mr. Mayor.
Motion to approve or a motion to introduce into the record.
Second.
So we have a motion by Councilmember Justin Manalo and a second by Vice Mayor Ray Ventura. Um, can I get a roll call vote, please, the City Clerk?
Mr. Buena Ventura.
Aye.
Ms. Di Giovanni.
Hi.
Ms. Manala.
Hi.
Mr. Sylvester.
Glenn Sylvester, aye.
Dr. Rod.
Aye. So motion passes. Um, moving on to public appearances and oral communications. Are there anybody, um, public, public comment?
In accordance with the Brown Act laws governing regular meetings, the City Council is not authorized to speak to or take action on any other I V meeting. Members of the public who wish to comment may click the raise hand feature to raise your hand to speak. For those joining by phone, press star nine to raise your hand and star six to unmute. It is important to note that staff will announce the name of the last person whose hand was raised upon calling for public comment, and that person will be the last verbal comment. If additional speakers queue up after the last called speaker, the mayor may continue to allow public comment if time allows. Otherwise, public comment may be emailed to cityclerk@dailycity.org to be added to the record and shared with the City Council. When you hear your name called, staff will send a request to unmute your microphone, and you may begin speaking. Each person will receive a maximum of two minutes to speak and may only speak once. When your two minutes have been reached, we ask that you wrap up your comments. Speakers on in compliance will be muted. Any use of profanity will result in the speaker being muted immediately. Okay, it looks like we have one hand raised. The caller, you can press star six to unmute.
Let me have my tablet back, ma.
All right, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Hello? Oh, perfect, okay. So, um, again, thanks for your time tonight. I just want to go through a couple of things. Um, we actually wanted to take a really closer look at what happened in the last couple of meetings, and we're a little concerned. I know Pam was on mute for a while, and, uh, want to make sure that there was no purpose behind that. Want to make sure that everything's good. You guys are behaving yourselves. I don't want to have to, you know, we don't want to have to keep coming back and reminding, reminding everybody of that. Leilani, I want to give you kudos. I want to give you big kudos for, for jumping up and, uh, bringing that to everyone's attention, that Pam was mute, and you put up with a lot, and you know, obviously, I could, some of us could be a little rough around the edges, but thank you so much. You're doing great. You, you guys are doing a great job, and really appreciate it. I want to make sure that you guys work as a team. I mean, I think, yeah, I'm just going to say it. Um, Daly City has a population of 107,000. And every single board, every single commission should be centered around the community. What I heard before about the Arts and Culture Commission was zero public comment. I didn't see any individuals like saying, I need to join this meeting, and I need to make my input about public comment, about the library, about the commission. So I think outreach needs to be done to the community. I think the money being spent by the City of Daly City should be spent on the community. Now, we're going to be doing this at Koma too, because Koma has a population of about 1,700, and Koma receives approximately $12 million in tax revenue from auto row, Target, Home Depot, all that good stuff. But, um, I think every city, every town should be focused on community, community involvement, community, uh, commissions, community boards. And, you know, for a city to have 107,000 people and one public comment is, um, I can't tell you, it's just not good. I, I, you know, I would think as a council member, I should be reaching out and saying, here's what the city could, here's what the city could offer. Anyway, thanks for listening. I really appreciate it. You guys have a good night. Bye.
Thank you for your comments. That concludes public comment.
Leilani, moving along, um, appointments, board commission, membership committee appointments. Are there any appointments by any of my colleagues? Seeing none. Reports, uh, council committee reports. Are there any council committee reports to be shared with us? Okay, seeing none. I'll go ahead and proceed to City Council reports. Are there any City Council reports? All right. Councilmember Pamela Di Giovanni.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just in short, um, because I know that you recognize a lot of people that there's so much one, uh, in a month, but there is, this is also celebrating Autism Acceptance Month. It's also, on top of everything else, National Dispatcher Appreciation Week. And maybe this is for the, your future, uh, Mr. Mayor, because there's so much to keep up with. And also for those, uh, celebrating Ramadan, Passover, and Easter. You want to send all of them our blessings, peace and love. And, uh, if we could do something especially for the autism, that'd be great, Mr. Mayor. I'd really appreciate it, at, at the next meeting. So thank you very much, and a dispatch.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Pamela Di Giovanni. Vice Mayor Ray Buendur.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to update the community on some, um, what I had mentioned, uh, maybe a couple of, um, council meetings ago regarding the, uh, donation drive that PPRC, um, had pledged to support. Um, so their, their pledge is still very, uh, much there. The, the problem has been that, in terms of logistics and getting confirmation as to who is going to receive the, the donated goods, um, there has been some issues regarding be- being able to confirm who can actually receive chip, uh, shipment. Um, and so that's been an issue. Um, as, as soon as we get confirmation uh, about the materials, we're going to, we are going to go forward with the donation drive. Um, and we're all going to work together as a community to try to get them the relief the people of Ukraine, um, need. And so, um, that's the, the latest update. I just, I would encourage people to just keep listening. Um, we'll, we'll let you know when it happens. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, are there any other, um, council committee reports? I'll share, um, a couple or a few. Um, let's see here. I was able to meet, I can't remember the days now. Okay. Let me just write some notes real quick. Um. Sorry about that, y'all. Let me just, um. Well, um, I, I think I have some of these dates, um, correct, so let me just go over these. So one is, um, I was able to attend a general meeting with, uh, a Filipino Bi-Ni-Han Resource Center, the PPRC. And it was a general meeting slash community town hall. And I had a fruitful, um, discussion with the members, talking about, um, providing, um, services, um, what is kind of like the overall, um, um, state of the city. Um, so I just shared a little bit of what I talked about in the state of the city in terms of, um, the different community organizations that are coming up, such as the Kappa, the Kappa Cultural Center and the Mental Health, um, cafe that they're, they're putting together. Um, the Tita Alice Bulos, um, community hub that is, um, hopefully be opening up soon. And so I just, I just, um, shared with them in terms of like different community, the, community opportunities um, that are forthcoming. Um, my second, uh, meeting I had was with, uh, Peninsula Family Services Project. And I just want to gi- give a quick shout out to Mariah Damp and Heather Cleary. And, you know, I just want to, um, thank, thank them for everything that they do, for the, the seniors, the youth, um, the community out in the Bay Shore and, and the work that they do. Um, and it, it just, it just gave me a, a good chance to, um, get to know what they, they've been doing, and I've always seen them on the ground, and I just wanted to give them a very, very thank you and appreciation for, um, them giving their time and my time to, to talk about the work that they do. Also, um, this Wednesday, April 13th, um, here at Daly Ci- Daly City Hall, we'll be doing the Ukrainian flag raising here at 11:00 AM. And the atrocities that are continuing to hap- happen is disheartening, but we all want to, um, show to the Ukrainian nation and Ukrainian people that Daly City stands in solidarity with ending, ending this atrocity and, and strive for peace. So, um, with that, I just want to hand it over to Vice Mayor Ray Buendur.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, you had reminded me when you mentioned the word, um, the name Alice Bulos. Um, I wanted to give the community an update regarding the signs that, uh, we had, um, we, we passed, uh, maybe a year or two years ago. Um, I spoke to the, the people from Cal, uh, Caltrain, I think it was. And they said the actual sign is actually going to be ready in about four weeks. So it's moving along. And so as soon as, uh, we get final confirmation, I think we can all celebrate and do something, uh, together. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Pamela Di Giovanni.
Uh, thank you, and thank you for expressing for the Ukrainian people, you know, like, like it's ongoing for all of us. Um, yes, I attended the, uh, town hall meeting with Assemblymember Phil Teen and Assemblymember Kevin Mullin. They had it at Koma. It was well-attended. As they know, most people know it's a budget surplus, but it's not as much as a surplus as you think it is once they go over everything, probably like in our situation as well. Um, they're on recess, but when they go back, Assemblymember Teen said that, you know, they're getting a lot of proposals for, obviously from all over the state. So, um, we have to stay tuned and, and we'll see, you know, like the Mason, if there's anything we can go for in, in our city. But, um, there's a lot of requests, especially for, uh, different types of housing and things like that. So, um, quite informative, as they always are, and we're lucky to have those leaders, um, in our area. Um, so hopefully they'll be doing another coffee soon, and maybe we could have them in Daly City. Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Pamela Di Giovanni. Councilmember Justin Manalo. Oh, Justin, I think you just hit mute.
Am I good now? Very good. Okay. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Um, in, uh, last month or in the time, uh, we last met, I wanted to share, I had the opportunity to join a panel with, uh, the League of Cities, African-American. with the League of Cities African American Caucus. They had a panel celebrating Women's History Month. And so, it was definitely great to be amongst other leaders and, and other elected officials as well as folks in different sectors to talk about like what is actually happening now and to have the conversations continue around having equity and in the, I think that very day, I don't know if it, she wasn't, she, she, the Senate hasn't, didn't have her, approve her nomination yet, but it was definitely a discussion and a topic around our new justice to be able to have, you know, women of color, Black women of color, have that representation on there, and also just being a public servant and also balancing, you know, motherhood and all the other, being a working mother. So, there was real conversation in that dialogue, and I think the African American Caucus were inviting me to participate on that panel. And then also today, in honor of the 80th commemoration of the Batan Death March, happened on April 9th, right? And so, really, being able to pay homage to the Filipino World War II veterans and also the Americans that were in the Batan Death March, and hearing the stories of what happened during the war from just children who saw the war and the, really, the sacrifices that these veterans have gone through. You know, reminds us as this Wednesday, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your leadership. That reminds us as we raise the Ukrainian flag that we must fight against atrocities and war, and that this is happening now in our times. So, I wanted to share that. Also, was able to, the exhibit will be at the Philippine consulate until the end of the month, and so, people are able to see the tribute to the Filipino World War II veterans, the survivors of the Batan Death March, and also the history that San Francisco played during the World War II. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Justin Manalo, are there any other, and that, city council reports? Seeing none, I'll proceed to staff, Shauna, if you have any reports.
Nothing tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you, Shauna. And getting to the last thing on our agenda, we, to, in German in memory, I'll hand it off to Justin Manalo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It is with great sadness that I will be adjourning in memory of Jesus Benjamin Paxton. If you know his son, he has a shop right there on Mission Street, Derek. So, in condolences to your family, Derek. So, Jesus Benjamin Paxton, and also known as Boy to the family and friends, passed away after a courageous battle with COVID-19 on Friday, March 11, 2022. Benjamin moved to San Francisco, California with his late wife Marilyn and their three children, Julius, Ariel, and Cheryl Love in 1980 from the island of Guam. Through the years, they were blessed with three more sons, Dexter, Derek, and Daryl. Benjamin had a successful career as a manager at the first major casino in San Jose, California Bay, 101 for over 25 years. Benjamin and his wife loved to travel, watch movies, attend concerts, Broadway shows, and dine on the finest food. Benjamin, along with his wife, was a longtime resident of Daly City, California. Their son Derek Paxton is the proud owner of Black and Gold Barber Lounge. Benjamin Boy Paxton was survived by his six children, 10 grandchildren, four sisters, brother-in-laws, many nieces and nephews. Benjamin Boy Paxton was a remarkable man, and will be missed by many.
Thank you, Councilmember Justin Manalo. I would like to also conclude for Carlos Manuel Lacayo, who's a Water and Waste Water Resources plant, plant maintenance mechanic, one, one Carvajal's grandfather. May he rest in peace. Vladimir Rovinsky, who is Daly City Police Department's police assistant, Alec Rovinsky's brother. May he also rest in peace. And last, Steven Soto, Daly City Police Department Officer Herschel Tikson's father-in-law. For those that, for all the people in German memory, I would like to offer a moment of silence. Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone, and we'll see you in a couple of weeks. Bye, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.